All right. Hello, everybody. This is the Conservation Commission's meeting for April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is now seven oh four. And tonight we have with us Carol Jordan, Laura Rodriguez, Nora Jones, myself, Jackie Kulig. And excused right now are Marilyn Schreiber, Patty Phillips, and Heather Alexson. I'm not sure about if Bob is coming. I thought he was. Can I hear a motion to approve the minutes from March nineteenth?
Yeah, I have one minor correction. I abstained on the approval of the minutes because I was absent from the February meeting.
So you can just make a note or corrected, yeah, with that. Like Carol abstained.
Makes it not technically. Not that it matters much, but.
Any other corrections? Okay, do we want to have? Can I hear somebody move to approve as corrected?
So move.
Okay, Carol, second. Okay, Nora, thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstained? So moved. Thank you.
System, I can say unanimously, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Present to speak. So Austin Harmon is here from Hall. I think I'm going to ask Austin if he could just wait a few more minutes. We'll just get through our finance item and then we'll we'll go on to new old business at Fenton Ruby. Carol, you want to give us a treasurer's report?
Yep, actually, we've have now spent six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-five cents, leaving us with a balance of eight hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-five cents, of which one hundred is encumbered for plants for the pollinator garden and an indeterminate amount for seed packets for the the pollinator talk at the library this coming Saturday. We know we're going to be be paying the speaker some money for for the for the seed packets, but we don't have a figure now. Kathy, I'm assuming you're going to be there. You can you can get a figure from her.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we and and we can get a check cut as the next time. Actually, the the selectmen will be meeting on Monday. I might even be able to get it in on that bill listing on the twenty-first.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Carol, that could you say once again what we spent and what's left?
Okay. All right, we have now spent six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-five cents, leaving a balance of eight sixty fifty-five, of which a hundred plus whatever the cost of the seed packets for the the pollinator garden talk on Saturday comes to. So the unencumbered balance is is well, seven sixty fifty-five minus whatever the seed packets come to. So we will we've spent roughly half of our budget at this point, or they were spent or encumbered roughly half of our fifteen hundred dollar budget.
Thanks, Carol. Okay, and on the ARPA fund balance, just to make a note, it's the same as last meeting. It's one thousand eight hundred and two dollars and ninety cents to be spent by next March. Okay, moving on to old business, property management, Fenton Ruby Park. I think what we can do is just, there's no stewards' report tonight, no reported issues. So we can move on to forest management and the potential timber harvest. Austin, you're here today. Do you want to just make sure your microphone works?
Does everyone hear me well now?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
All right.
Very well.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Of course.
Has everybody had a chance to take a look at Fenton Ruby Park? The areas that Austin had put some flagging so that we'll get an idea of where the potential landings could be? Okay, I know Jackie has been there. Bob, myself, Carol, did you have a chance to get out?
I haven't I haven't had a chance to.
Okay. And I and I know that Patty had been out too. I had asked Austin after looking at the areas if he could also look. So there was one by the parking area just before the Ygold Trail. And then further down, as you go down Burma Road toward the Ruby Trail, where the Ruby Trail starts just beyond that, Austin had originally flagged that area there. And I had asked him if he could also go up and take a look at the landing that's beyond the rocks where we had had the other timber harvest. So I know that he has had a chance to go up there and look at that as an option instead of using the one that's by the Ruby Trail. So Austin, do you want to just talk a little bit about that area that we had used last time for the landing?
Yeah, absolutely. So the past landing area, obviously, we know that it worked in the past. I don't know the specifics as to what machinery or how many folks were part of the active timber harvest itself. It definitely is, in my opinion, a bit of a tighter landing than usual, especially if we were to use skitters for any part of the operation. Forwarders and log trucks are able to stack much more neatly than a skitter as the skitters typically have to haul the load in and then kind of bulldoze it with their blade sometimes up into the pile before the trucks can pick it up. But since we're planning this to be a joint operation with hopefully a skitter and a forwarder, I wouldn't be too concerned with the size of the landing. I essentially flagged off what I thought needed to be done, which is just about what they did last time. The only exception to that are a few trees you saw that they scun up from the last operation in the landing. Clearly, they're too close as they were last time. So I'm planning to have those cut to clear the landing site. But besides that, it's well usable and shouldn't be any issue for us to get up as long as the the road doesn't have any sudden or unexpected washouts between now and then, which it doesn't seem like it would.
So in your opinion, would that be a better option than the one that's just down by the Ruby Trail entrance?
It very well depends on your folks' preference, I guess, to say. The one at the Ruby Trail entrance obviously is going to get a lot more exposure to the public eye. So it really depends if you want one there or not. I think the Ruby Trail one might be a better area just because it's 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 already a bit of a turnaround with the other road or access road coming in and out of there. It'd be a lot easier for the trucks to come in and more spots for our subcontractors be able to park close by. And there's a good potential, we might be able to turn that into, you know, afterwards, instead of a log landing area, we might be able to put the blade down on the skitter, kind of bulldoze it a little bit and plant some conservation mix and possibly make another habitat type right at the entrance.
Yeah, I think what we want to avoid, though, is it becoming an area where people try to park in the future because we really don't want people driving down the road. So it would be important to make sure that, you know, we, you know, reseed it and it it appears to be an area that's off limits to parking. There is some stone, there are some stone walls near both of the landings that you're proposing, one by Ygold Trail and one by Ruby Trail. Can you talk to us about what happens when you have to move the rocks there? You know, how, what what would be your responsibility for putting those rocks back in place after the landing is no longer being used?
So I can afterwards. First off, we tried to minimize any damage to stone walls. Hold on one second. We try to minimize damages to stone walls as much as we can in the first place. Now and then, we obviously need to fell trees over or extend or create barways for the machinery, which I think we will have to do for some aspects in this case and some areas. But it's also nice how the machines, especially with the forwarder, they'd be able to go just only through the stone wall in one section once and then just go right up to the edge of the wall, stack the logs on the backside, and then a log truck can reach over the wall, grab the logs, and then pull it over the wall. So therefore, you shouldn't have to create many openings and what's already existing. Afterwards, I could go back and pick up the stones in a kind of a simple manner as the farmers back then did. I'm not going to create some elaborate wall, but I can definitely stack them to resemble a wall once again. It won't be anything scrutinous, but I can definitely pick them up and put them back in place as much as I can. In terms of cutting off accessibility, obviously, we're able to find any rotten or hollow logs or any boulders in the meantime and block off areas as you folks seem as you might want. The the concern for access at the Fenton, sorry, the Ruby Trail entrance. There's already a stone wall there and there's nothing quite stopping the cars from going up to that turnaround as it is. So we wouldn't go and disrupt that wall anymore to the point of making it accessible for vehicles. It would essentially just be, you know, we would stack logs and firewood on it and areas as needed, but we would leave it in a condition afterwards. So it's not accessible easily, I guess you could say.
And then the one that's closer to the parking lot, the Ygold Trail entrance there, because that has, you know, that's more kind of up on a slope. And also, there's a wall there in front of where you would have to go behind that part as well for the landing. It's very close to the parking area. Again, one of my concerns is when we start opening all that up, you know, people may try to use it as a parking spot if we don't put the the stones back there or something to block it.
Absolutely, absolutely, Kathy. And we can, as I said, obviously, go back and make the walls at least resemble what they did before if we do have to mess with them in any areas within reason, of course, as well as place boulders or other logs as you folks might want to do at the trail entrances and such to prohibit any unnecessary vehicle access.
And then the other thing that you and I did talk about, I think, a little bit on the phone was if you need to bring in any fill to stabilize the landing areas, you did talk about possibly bringing in bark from the mill, the lumber mill, to put down where where the logs would be landing. And how do you reseed in areas where you have a lot of bark mulch?
Good question. So depending on where the bark would go, as I said, we wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to reseed much well on the bark. But depending on how much bark we'd need to put down, I'd prefer not. Typically, I like to use either stone or temporary bridge mats. In this case, it seems like bridge mats would be a better fit as needed because we can just take them in and out rather than have to lay down some sort of material and then excavate or bulldoze it back out of place just to leave in a pile somewhere. So if we had to use bark mulch or stone, we couldn't seed over it unless it were stirred up and moved to another area and repurposed somewhere else. You would only be able to reseed over bare mineral soil properly.
So the mats would be the preferable preferable option?
That is correct. Yeah, because the temporary timber bridge mats, you're able to lay down the entire piece and from the exception of small pieces of wood that might break off the mat, which is a natural material that decomposes, the entire mat can be picked up and taken offsite, essentially just leaving minor soil compaction over the landing area where they were laid down.
Does anybody else have questions?
One thing that, you know, Kathy had sent me the template, or maybe she sent it to everyone, the template for the for the timber sale agreement. And the only comment I had on that was just, I saw that it described what the condition of the roads would be after the harvest. But, you know, with all these discussions of the landing, once we decide, you know, what we want done, just to have that in the contract, how the landing is going to be left after the harvest.
Absolutely, Jackie, and thank you for pointing that out. That contract you folks saw, and I'm not sure if we're going over the whole thing tonight or not, but that's up to you. But the contract you have available to you is just a simple boilerplate one. So it's not including everything that, you know, you might want it to. If you want to add in criteria or take out criteria, we very well can discuss that. That's just the boilerplate as it is. But I do agree, if you do, if you do have certain things we want to touch on and make sure they're noted, we can write up a clause and add it into the contract and make sure it's agreeable between both parties.
And so things like the half acre openings that we were discussing for wildlife, that's something that could be put into the contract?
Yeah, absolutely. If you'd like, it's really your call. The contract's going to state that we cut all trees with blue paint on them. That's worth anything in terms of sawtimber or firewood. So if you want to add it into the contract, you can. I'm not sure if that's quite necessary because I'm going to, before any harvest, obviously, go flag the areas to be cleared and then mark all the trees within it to be cut as well. So that's something that's kind of already agreed upon us cutting the trees with blue paint. But if you want to add it in, we definitely can. It doesn't hurt.
And then the blue paint that you're putting on the trees that are harvested, does that stay on the stump? Is that visually still noted on the stump?
Yep, yep, exactly. That's correct. Yeah, so we mark two sides of the tree and then once on the stump, and I try to pick most stumps have some sort of small crevice in them. I try to tuck it in that crevice just in case the machines drive over or around. That way, it helps keep as much blue paint on the stump as possible, rather than if it's on the main skid trail, it might get worn off if they drive over the stump a number of times. The only exception to that would be property boundary trees, those we only mark on the owner's side. We don't circle around the backside.
Okay. So from a visual standpoint, after the timber harvest in those areas in in the forest, we're going to be seeing blue paint on all the stumps. So yeah, I'm not sure how many trees eventually will would be cut, but I, you know, from people hiking and just a visual presence in the the woods, I just wonder again how long that's going to be visible, you know?
At most, I would say five to ten years at the very most that the blue paint would still be visible on the stump because obviously, once the trees are cut, the stump immediately starts to decompose, besides the exception of some sprouting coming off, but that doesn't mean it's going to hold on to the bark on the outer edge of the stump by any means. And the sprouting, most likely, I assume, is going to get chewed very vigorously down by deer. So I don't think the sprouts will be able to amount to too much. For the most part, some may survive. But the blue paint will be visible afterwards. If you'd rather us not put a blue paint mark on the stump, we very well can. That's just industry standard. And it's also just kind of a liability thing for us as well. So if we went out in the woods together and there was an eight-inch firewood pole that was harvested but doesn't have blue paint on the stump, I can go bother the logger and say, hey, what's going on, right? We got to protect as much of the residual as we can. There's a reason I came out here and marked the trees rather than just let you come in willy-nilly and start cutting. So it's that's the main reason that stump spot is something in the industry. But if you'd rather us not, we very well won't have to if you'd prefer.
How would you? How would you mark them in a way that the person doing the harvest itself would, which know, would know which trees if you didn't put blue paint?
I can still put the blue paint on both sides of the trees at eye level because since they're harvesting the timber, those pieces won't be in the woods anymore. They're bringing them out for sawtimber or firewood, but we wouldn't just spray that one spot on the stump. So there wouldn't be any residual paint left unless, you know, on the off chance where I sprayed with paint was a rotten part of the log and they cut that piece and left it in the woods, but that hopefully shouldn't be very, very large part of the harvest.
Okay.
How much equipment, how much traffic would there be of the equipment going up and down Burma Road?
It would just be the subcontractors driving their personal vehicles in every day to work in and out. You know, obviously, if they leave for lunch or such, they may do that as well. The logging machinery, skitters and forwarder wise, would only go in and out once as well. And then the log trucks would come and go as they need to to grab sawtimber and firewood and other products. If we did need to bring bridge mats or stone or bark mulch, that would be another truck, a dump body truck from our company we would bring to deliver that as well. Of course.
Any other questions? Okay, well, Austin, thank you so much again for coming tonight. It's so helpful to really, you know, be able to ask you directly rather than going back and forth with questions via email and so on. And, you know, we'll we'll be back to you as soon as we can. I mean, what what would you consider to be in terms of timing to let you know if we're going to move forward with this and the areas that we would be doing? What would you hope in terms of moving this forward so we can do the harvest later in the year?
Absolutely. If you were looking to get the harvest done later this year, I would recommend from our previous conversations, it sounded like peak winter time is the best spot, not only for hopefully peak weather conditions for logging as well, but also minimal pedestrian traffic in the park. At least, that's the idea. For us to go through, get the proper approvals, I'm not sure how long it will take. Typically, it's simple, just send in a notification or I do the notification online for the Wetlands Commission and get the mailing all set. But I'm not sure if the Conservation Commission is going to have to have a sit-down vote or how many meetings that might be just to go over the contract, get it finalized. I'm not sure how many meetings it might take for the Board of Selectmen to go over it as well. If you wanted to have it confidently ready and able to be done, I would prefer it to I'd prefer end of July, early August. That way, the fieldwork shouldn't take me too long. And then the paperwork, at least getting it ready for initial drafting, shouldn't take too long either. It's just the town meetings that I'm not sure. It's kind of, I haven't dealt with, you know, multiple parts of a municipality too much in the past. So I know every town's different, of course, so I'm not sure if it might just be done all in a two-month span or if it's going to be dragged on to four months, but.
All right, that sounds pretty reasonable. I'm sure we can make a decision by that at that point, by that point and get back to you for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. And as always, any other questions or concerns, feel free to reach out to me, let me know, and I'm more than more than happy to join another meeting or two as we need to help speed this along or answer anything in person.
Okay. Great. All right. Thank you so much. Have a good rest of your evening.
You too, folks. Thank you.
Thanks, Austin.
Yep.
Bye.
Okay. Um. So at this point, I had, as Austin mentioned, he had sent a timber sale agreement, just a boilerplate type of agreement. I had sent it to Jackie to ask her to look it over and just see, you know, if she had some comments about things that should be added. And, you know, as she mentioned tonight, the information that we should probably put in would be conditions about how the landings would be left. So I think we, you know, we need to talk about this as a full commission. Do, does anybody have some thoughts about things at this point? How are you feeling about moving forward with the timber harvest in either one or both areas?
So Kathy is saying one or both areas. You're talking, I thought was mostly going to be in the area of the Ygold Trail. Is there other in the other areas is is nearer the previous harvest?
No, it was the, it's it's up in the Ygold Trail area, Carol, that Austin and Jackie had looked at. And also in our forest management plan, Conwood does say that it should, you know, have a
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Harvest, yeah. I think.
You were talking about other areas.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Because areas multiple, I was confused.
I mean, we could opt to do one area at a time. Austin said they are prepared. If we wanted to, they could cut both areas, the Ygold Trail area and the Ruby Trail area. But we can decide if we want to, you know, do one at a time, see how that goes, see what what things look like, what the reaction of the public is to it. You know, there are, we have options. So that's what we're exploring.
And that's, I wasn't sure how exactly it would be done, if we're going to be harvesting in both areas with the equipment being go be going back and forth between the areas and that sort of thing. I'm concerned about impact on the road and people walking along the road to get to trails and that kind of thing.
I once say, like Austin mentioned, you know, the equipment that's doing the the cutting and the harvesting, and Jackie, please jump right in. That will be in the forested area. So, yeah, it would just be the people coming in that are doing the work each day and they, you know, they could park down the road if they're down at the Ruby area, or they would probably park in the regular parking area and just walk in from there. You know, I I personally am having a little bit of angst about doing both areas at once. I have some concerns about the Ygold Trail area because the landing is so close to everything. It's what people are going to walk by initially as they're leaving the parking area. I know that over time, things will, you know, that the forest heals itself. But I do have some concerns about doing both areas at once. I worried that it's going to be it's going to cause a lot of anger from people who use the park. But that's that's my opinion. So I don't know how other people.
If it's done in the winter, probably that would minimize somewhat the impact on the public and use of the trail.
What was the reaction with the other harvest? I was not on the commission at that time.
Um, because it was out of view. I mean, people came out to, we had a walk and people were interested in learning what was going to happen. We had information in the kiosk about the harvest. And I think the only thing that people saw was occasionally a log truck coming in and out because the landing was way up where nobody really was walking. They weren't seeing the stacked logs. They weren't even seeing the cut afterwards because we have no trails there. We're planning to do this in two areas that have trails. As we all know, the forest looks pretty messy after this happens. And people, I think, are going to have some strong reactions if they're hiking in the park and we've got both of these areas that have been done at the same time, you know, in the relatively short span of time.
Kathy, is the is the area on the Ygold Trail a higher priority on the Conwood plan or are they roughly the same?
I believe that it was recommended we do it in two thousand and twenty-two and the one and the Ygold is two thousand and twenty-eight.
So the the first one, the two thousand and twenty-two, which which one, I'm sorry, that was?
Ygold, that's the one that's closest to the parking lot up on the right.
Twenty-two, and then what was two thousand and twenty-eight?
Two thousand and twenty-eight is the recommended period of time to do the cut on the Ruby Trail.
On the Ruby Trail, okay.
Yeah.
I think it might be the other way around, the the one closer to the parking lot, I think, was recommended later.
It was? Now, that's.
I I can double-check that and, you know, I'll talk to everybody, but I'm.
That might be, might be something to take into consideration if, when, you know, when it was recommended that the that the the cutting take place. Maybe we could do the higher priority one first, area first.
Is, are they saving, are we saving money by doing them at the same time? And that's, I I kind of think we should only focus on one, but are we saving money by doing two at a time at one time?
I I'm not sure. And, you know, they're going to be paying the town a certain amount for the timber. I don't know if they would pay more. Jackie, maybe you would know if they're.
Typically, someone would would factor in moving the equipment into their bid price, you know, if they were bidding on a sale because it's through their company. It might be a little different, but they would have to factor in that cost.
And we don't necess, we don't necessarily plan on making money on this. We didn't make much on the last time we had a harvest. It's a, it's more, it's a management issue, not necessarily for profit. We hope not to not to have to expend.
We're definitely doing larger areas, though. The last harvest was eighteen acres. The town netted about two thousand dollars. Not that that's the issue, as you said, for this is for for improving the forest health. But we're talking about sixty acres on the Ygold and seventy-two acres on the Ruby.
And that's.
Significant larger area that's going to be impacted by the harvest.
And there will be. Visible areas.
Much more visible areas. You think, you know, the trails go in big loops around these and they'll be cutting, you know, around the loops, inside of the loops. They're not just cutting way out on the edges where nobody is really going to see it. It will. They're not just cutting way out on the edges where nobody is really gonna see it. Um, it, it will definitely be, I mean, I'm very, I'm very familiar with timber harvests and things from things that I do up in Vermont, and it still shocks me. And, and I know the, I know the value of it for the forest, so I'm just concerned about what kind of reaction. I mean, what can they do, you know, but um, we do have public that does a lot of support for like the open space funding and all that stuff. So I just worry that in the future, they're gonna be concerned, people that were buying property that's gonna be, you know, just for timber harvesting or something.
Well, I think if, if one of them is not, is recommended for twenty-eight, and, and you're voicing a lot of concern about you know, how the, the folks using it, using the park will feel, seems to be to make sense to just do the one that should have been done in twenty-two. And then incorporate as much educational stuff as we can about the importance of timber harvest and make it um, make it kind of an event. You know, don't, you, you, you can't hide it, it sounds like, at these trails, so you might as well be very you know, upfront about it and, and explain why this is something that's really important, and we're gonna have another one in a couple of years, because there's another area that needs to be done too, so.
Yeah.
And we hiked Soapstone Mountain once when they were doing uh, timbering there, and they had a lot of informative signage about, you know, what was being done and why. And I think that's a really, it's an educational opportunity as well. Um, but, but I, I, I tend to agree that we might be better off doing one area um, at a time. Especially if it's, because if it would ah, impact both the Ygold Trail and, and the Ruby Trail, then that, that, that's then, then, then there are fewer part, areas of the park that people can go that are, that are free of that, the, the uh, in, intrusion. So, that's something to think about.
And also, if we wait, um, what would be, be leading like um, three years to do the twenty twenty-eight one? Um, you know, we're going to have different age um, regrowth. So maybe that's also good in the long run for wildlife and so on, you know. It's not a big spread, it's not like, you know, ten years apart, but um, maybe there'll be some, some differences there.
Well, I'm thinking this, the one that should have been done in twenty-two is already going to be five years, because it'll be um, twenty-six, right, winter, twenty-six.
Yeah.
So that's four years. I, my, my math is bad at the end of the day. But I actually said the numbers, like, no, that's only four years. So I'm thinking the twenty-eight, if that's in thirty-two. You know, we, we do that four years late also, it'll be a longer stretch.
Any other comments or concerns? Hi, Bob, I see you've come in. You wanna check your microphone?
No, it's on.
Okay, good, we hear you. We were just, um, Austin Harmon was just here with us and talking about the landings. And he had also gone up to take a look at the other landing that we've used in the past for the timber harvest beyond the rocks. Um, and he said that was a potential as well, if, if the, if we preferred to use that area versus the Ruby uh, landing. Um, and I know you've seen all those areas, so um, do you have any thoughts about um, a potential harvest in the Ruby area, in the Ygold area?
I just think the Ygold area is just gonna be in everybody's face. We're, we're gonna get a lot of feedback from uh, putting a landing area there. You know, I understand the need to uh, potentially have a harvest in there. Um, if we don't do a harvest, we could always do some selective cuts ourselves, the open part of the area. That was my, that was my thought.
And what do you think about the Ruby area?
Well, I, I think it's the same thing. I mean, it's uh, why open up and why fill in an area, especially that low area where he has it marked for a landing site? When we can uh, use what's up there, let them enlarge that if necessary, and uh, there there, there's no sizable timber on that last knoll that comes down to where he's proposing the landing site. So why have all the, all the logs from that whole parcel come up over that hill for the convenience of a, a new landing site? Where we can bring them down over that, that second hill, across the road and into the landing site. And pretty much leaving that area where the Ruby Trail starts next to the home site, as it is. That, again, that, that's, that's my, those are my thoughts.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. Anybody else? Okay. Well, why don't we give this so, a little more thought if people who have not been, had a chance to go out um, to Fenton Ruby, have a chance to get out and just look at the proposed landings. Um, that'd be helpful, and then maybe we can make a decision in May. Um, and then, you know, we can work on modifying the timber sales agreement if we're gonna move forward to include the um, conditions that we want, that protects the town. And then we can move it forward to the Board of Selectmen.
Kathy, how would we recognize what the proposed landing areas are? Are they marked in some way?
Yes, so they're marked four corners, Carol, with flags.
Okay.
Think they're, are they pink or they blue?
I think they're pink.
Okay. Whatever. But just as you're.
What sex are, the marker flags?
So, I mean, it's pretty evident as you just start walking out of the parking lot on the right-hand side, just after you get past like a little bit of a teeny weeny little wetland that's right there, before the start of the Ygo Trail, you can see it marked out in four corners. And you'll see it goes beyond, um, there's a stone wall there, so they'd have to open up that stone wall to work in that area. And then if you walk all the way down Burma Road to where the three stones are across the end of Burma Road, just next to the right, Y, uh, Ygold, excuse me, the Ruby Trail start, you'll see there's some flags there to the right of the, the trailhead. So. Alright, if you think of any other questions that you want me to ask Austin, just uh, email me and I can send them to him. Alright, let's uh, move on. So, getting on to the Paddock Sanctuary. Um, couple of things, the Public Works Department was able to start working this week. They've opened up Lustig Road so that they can get in with the trucks to remove the camp. So hopefully, within the next week or two, they'll be able to get that done, and also clear some of the trees that are on the dam. Um. The I had written a letter to the Board of Selectmen asking them to uh, affirm that the Conservation Commission has management authority uh, over the Paddock Sanctuary as part of Fenton Ruby Park, and that's on their agenda for next Monday. Uh, we had, I know Carol um, had mentioned to me that she started an open space file. Carol, do you wanna just talk about that for the Paddocks property, the open space file?
Well, I think, yeah, I think it's become clear with, we now have three, three separate properties that make up the park. So I think we're gonna, we're gonna have an overall file that will have three sections for the Ruby proper, park, the original Ruby pro, park, and then a section uh, with the documents pertaining to Dravny and a, and a separate section for Paddocks. Um, and you know, I, um, so we've got, um, we've got, and both Kathy and I been doing a little bit of research. We're not finding anything terribly exciting about, about the property, nor would I necessarily expect to in that, that section of the, of the property and in a, a very relatively small parcel, but um, okay, um, we've got, we, one of the things that we, of course, we need to do is to update the map. Um, put in a, lay out a trail that will go um, to the property so people can find it. And um, and we've talked about what we plan to do with signage they, on this, on that site as well as the official sign that would go by the, by the uh, entrance to the park.
So we could talk a little bit more about signage, but I just wanted to um, understand, Carol, are you willing to work on the brochure to update it?
Yeah, I'd be willing to work on the brochure, brochure, um, and, and perhaps we can, we can add some information that we didn't have before on, on the other parts of the park as well, and you know, they're certainly open to a, any kind of editing. Um, that, that, that people feel, I would like to have somebody else work on it with me, um, but, because I think, you know, more input is, is useful. Um, and it's certainly goes, the original brochure goes back a long, long way. To when my daughter was in seventh grade and did the original design. So, that was a long time ago, guys. She got her Girl Scout Silver Award for doing the park brochure, so. But it's certainly, so good ripe for some modification and updating. Uh, and, and that goes for the whole, I think for the whole brochure as well as, as just the section that we would add with regard to the Paddocks property.
Great, well, thank you for doing that.
I'd be, I'd be willing to help you, Carol.
That'd be great, thank you, Laura.
Just not in the next three weeks, okay?
No. No, this is gonna take more time, but I think, you know, we really won't, won't be prepared to, to really, really do this, have uh, invest in this a lot of time and effort until we've figured out how we would get people to that part, portion of the park and, and uh, you know, the trail design and and um, whatever we would want to put up, a, a, may, maybe a mini kiosk there with information about uh, the Paddocks, the uh, that particular parcel and, and uh, its features and that kind of thing. So um, it's gonna, it, I don't think this is not a thing that's gonna happen right away. Clearly not, and I.
Work in progress.
Work in progress, yeah.
Okay, great. Um, so talking about the signage, I'm gonna screen share here if I can. Um, let's see if I can do this. I might have to. Hang in there, guys, I'm just trying to see how I can view share with you, because I had to make my I can get this to be bigger again, boy. Alright, let's try this. Alright, how's that? Can you see this sign? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can see it. I was muted.
Okay, and you can see the sign, good. Um, so, couple things, I had sent out four different signs. Um, just to see if we could get some feedback, because I wanted to check in with Mrs. Paddocks. Um, and Carol suggested we wait till this meeting, which is fine. Um, and she had made a suggestion that we make all of the text the same size for the title, so I.
Not necessarily, not necessarily, because I, I just didn't, I didn't, I, I would prefer to have it say Dean and Laura W. Paddocks on the top line and Sanctuary underneath and, and uh,
Okay.
I think.
I, I, yeah, I understand, I think it's gonna be challenging to do it because of the ratio for the bronze sign is twenty to ten, so it's twenty inches across by ten down.
Yeah.
And to try to squeeze the Paddocks onto the top line and just have Sanctuary underneath, I think is gonna be difficult. Um, let me show you something.
Sure.
Um, if I can find it. See. This is a picture of can you see this? This is the Daniel W. and Eleanor W., Eleanor L.
Yeah, yeah, we can see it.
So that's how we did it in the past.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we put the last name on the second line, so I just wanted to show you that we have done that before.
That's a um, that's fine, I, I would just um, concerned that, that we, we incorporate the language that, that we're legally required to have on the sign in, as, in accordance with the terms of the purchase and sales agreement.
Um, yeah.
And, and that, you know, we limit that signage to those things. I think maybe we could is there any chance of, of making the addition to the park on a, um, move that up a little bit, Kathy? Make the addition to Fenton Ruby Park more prominent than the date?
Oh, sure, yeah, that can be changed.
I think we can fiddle around with the, I'm more concerned with, with what information is on the sign. And um, and I think it's, it's very clear from the, from the, the agree, the sales agreement. Um, that was her opportunity to indicate what conditions she wanted to have on the signage and that we should follow that. Her, her wishes in that regard.
Well, I, I have had a, a chance to speak to her and asked her about that, and she did tell me she would like to have something besides just this on the sign, and I know it wasn't in the purchase and sales, but I did read you a letter she had sent me when we negotiated this. Um, it wasn't specified specifically in the purchase and sales, the only thing that was specified was the name of the sanctuary. Um, and that the town would provide, uh, you know, a sign on the property and that we would have a durable sign and would be responsible for maintaining it. Um, but as far as the sentiment was something she had put into a letter to me, an email to me, which I did read to you all. And she said if, if it's possible to put something else, not on the bronze sign, because she doesn't know about that.
Yeah.
So the bronze sign itself can be anything we want it to be. But as far as the sign that we would put on the property, which would probably look more like the Talmage or the Walton Signs, and, and again, I don't wanna get too far ahead of us, but um, we have the option of just going with something standard like this for the bronze. Or any of those other three options that we had discussed a little bit um, last time, I'll just bring them up. And again, you know.
Well, Kathy, I, I, I think the main, because my main concern at this point is I think we all understand that there's we want to have at the entrance to the park, um, similarly to the, the Dravny Sanctuary. They uh, we, the press was made that the sign be in a prominent location, so following that pattern, that precedent, we want to have it in the prominent location at the entrance to the park, which is where people will actually see it. And um, I think that um, the, for me, um, I think that that um, the appropriate thing is, if is to have, we, we'd have to remember that we're a conservation commission, and what we need to be focusing on is what it was that made that a special place as an, a, a, a parcel to be conserved and made available to the public. And um, I'm a little bit uncomfortable um, in um, in, in putting on the bronze plaque. Yeah, are, are we talking tonight just about the bronze plaque and reserving for, for, for the future? When we get to the point of being able to determine what we're gonna have, whether we're gonna have a mini kiosk, or what we're going to do on the property itself, that I think is the place where, and in the brochure, where we can discuss what was special about this place to them. But for the, for the plaque that's going to be at the entrance to the park, I would prefer to see the language that is specified in the agreement, and the important part is, is and, and make the addition to Fenton Ruby Park um, more prominent and save language that, and that discusses their attachment to the property, uh, when we get to the point of putting signage on the parcel itself some, at some point in the future. That's, and I feel rather strongly about that, and particularly as there are precedents uh, from uh, prior prior signs that are on the parcel, that, on the property, and they're mostly, um, um, I, I, I guess it's clear to me that the, that the, the uh, that she, she indicated what the sign should say. And that did not appear at that time. I would like to see something of that nature, uh, but. Uh, but on the parcel itself, where she also wants to have signage.
I don't think we're disagreeing at all, Carol. I um, I think I was kinda saying the same thing.
Oh, okay. So you're talking the other, the other second sign you were showing would be for the other parcel?
It, it's op, yes, those are optional words for the other parcel, parcel, I mean.
Yeah.
There's, there's four, you know, there's four options that we did kinda discuss last time. And so, but what we're talking about now is the bronze sign and so everybody can weigh in. Thank you, you know, for sharing your, your thoughts.
Are you on mute?
I'm on, I'm the other, uh, just to re, uh, and looking at the other signs. Um, there, the, the words uh addition to the park were, would be in uh, were in larger lettering and they're um, with the, the date being in the smallest the smallest, the date is not required, but it would, it's something that I think should be on there um, to to indicate how the park has changed over time.
Right.
But I like to see a little bit of space. Um, uh, so what we, uh
I'm, I'm just bringing up the, the different ones, Carol, that we had originally.
Okay.
That's all. But please keep, keep talking. I'm just, you know.
I think um, I think I would, I would personally would would not like to see that language on there. Uh, on the bronze plaque. And I'd like to see addition to Fenton Ruby Park, which is, which was, which is, was and is one of the things that was most important to her from the very beginning. Um, I have a cup, I found Pete's file in the, in the bottom uh, that I that it's sitting in my basement for me to get around to pulling out things that should be put in the files. Long, another long-term project. But from the very beginning, the first conversation that um, that Pete had with Laura Peddix's father.
Why not?
A, a couple of, a couple of months uh after her, her husband died. Uh, the, one of the very first things that was mentioned was that she wanted it to become part of the the pro, the property become part of the park. So I'm thinking that the line that says addition to Fenton Ruby Park should be a little bit more prominent.
Okay.
Than the date.
Yeah, we, and that can certainly happen. That's not hard to, to adjust.
And I'd be very happy with that, but I'd like to see the, the other language reserved for signage at the uh onsite signage. Um, and some language in uh the revised park bro, brochure that indicates what was special about that place to them and why they wanted to share it with the public. And I think that's, that would be, I'd be very comfortable with that. Having, doing it in that way.
Okay, thanks. Um, other thoughts, people? Any, anyone else have some thoughts on the bronze sign?
That's the key, maybe it lead to the right of the shift key.
Does anybody um, make a motion on the bronze sign, what it should say?
I'd like to have, I'll make a motion to, to have the language that's currently um shown on the screen, except put it, putting addition to Fenton Ruby Park in uh, in larger type and the date in, in uh, uh, smaller type, uh relate as, you know, as, as um But the, I think the parts, parts that be, should be stressed are the names. And um, that it's the addition to the park, because those are obviously the things that were of highest concern to her. Uh, because they were incorporated into that. The adding the, the date is just something that we would put, do um, as being consistent with, with precedence with the other plaques for the other original property and the Drabney Sanctuary.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Do I hear any more discussion? Okay, hearing none. Um, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Okay, so moved. So we, we made a decision on the bronze sign. It will look like this. I'll work on uh making the addition to Fenton Ruby Park larger and the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five smaller.
Or, or that's, whatever, the proportions is, I think you could, actually sign people could probably help you with some with it with the proportions, Kathy.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can talk to Jeff about it. Um, he hasn't really gotten back to me yet on what the cost for a twenty by ten would be, because I had asked him that, because we, we knew the sign the size of the sign because of what we have left for space, so. But I can work on that and bring it back to the commission next uh meeting. Oh, and then I can, I can just share with you that what Mrs. Um Peddix had said is for the property sign, this, this language here was more of her preference.
Okay.
Um, she understands that it's our decision, but she said of the, you know, the four different ones, nothing. Uh, their special place, their special place of she, um shared love and happiness. Yeah. She said this was the one she preferred. And so what I did is also put this into see, if I can find it. Um, so just using um that in the green, like because I asked her if she would prefer brown or the green like we have on the other properties, and she said she preferred the green. So this is what, basically the language that she would be pleased with, so, or the property sign. And the dimensions on this, what I did was took the same uh width as what we have for the signs on the Knowlton and the Talmage, but it's half as long really, because we don't need the full length, because we don't have to put all the information about deep and so on.
Yeah, yeah, because that, that's, those signs are much larger generally because of the, of the requirements for the, the grant requirements.
Yeah.
So do you want to motion on this one?
Yeah, you know, I, I don't, I think, can we table some of this? Because this is not stuff, this part isn't gonna happen immediately. We've got time to work through the whole process of, of, of signage and language for to go into um a modified um brochure and that kind of thing and um and whether, what we want to do in terms of whether we want a mini kiosk or, or what we're going to do on that site. So I think it's a little premature to talk about the size of a sign and, you know, until we know where we would, what we would place it on. And um, you know, that, I think it's, I think it's, it's um it's not something that has to be done immediately, and it would be better to wait until we have determined how we're going to get people to that site. What kind of, what we're going to post the sign on and how that's going to interact with other, with other information that we would provide about, about that, that site. So I would like move to table this um until we are better prepared to see how a sign would fit into a, onto a particular site and in what way it would be used. And that would determine such things as size of the sign and that sort of thing, how it would be mounted and all of that. As the language, I've, um, you know, if that's the language that's desired, that's fine. But I think to get into the specifics of dimensions and, and all of that is a little premature.
Well, one of the things I was thinking is we're gonna have seven hundred dollars left over from this uh current budget year to use before the end of June. Um, so I was hoping we could move forward with coming up with some decision on the signage. Uh, the kiosk, Chris said that he'd be happy to build it. Um, or whatever we would use, you know, something similar if we wanted to, to what we did in Talmage or in Knowlton Trail. Um, the posts um that we would put up there, one of the options and opportunities we have right now is because we're able to go in on Lustig Road right now, we can have Public Works bring the posts in um, while they're still in there. Otherwise, somebody's gonna have to lug very heavy posts a mile up to the uh Peddix property. So I was kind of hoping we could at least make some decisions um about that before Public Works is, can only be in there for two weeks. And then really not gonna be
So my, my take on this, Kathy, for up on the property, I think we should probably go something the same size that we have down on the other uh preserves. Uh, the Knowlton uh preserve, uh about that size. And uh, you know, I, I just don't see why we can't uh move forward with this. At least have, at least have the pole, have the, the crew uh drill the holes and put the posts in for us.
Yeah.
And we can, we can bicker about this on and on.
Yeah.
Or we can just come to a uh, you know, consensus tonight.
This is, this is the Knowlton sign, for example. Um, if we made, if we made the Peddix sign the same size, we don't have a lot of verbiage, we're not putting lots of pictures.
Yeah. We don't have to put the deep symbols and all outside.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not sure. I'm a little concerned, Bob, about making it as large, just because I think it will look a little lost.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, we were thinking of make, my, my thought was making
All right, well, they've already got
You know, maybe three quarters down instead of the whole way down.
Yeah, I, I would go with that. You're gonna put it on a backing like this one is, the, the Knowlton one is still correct?
Yes, I mean, that was my thought, putting on a backing, and then you have two posts right here. Um, we can purchase the posts this week. I can get them up to um uh, Public Works, they can bring them out and leave them on the property or help us put them in, you know. Um, or they don't have to put them in. We could go up there with a post hole digger when we know where we want to put it.
Yeah.
Nice if we got the materials up there while we have the access. Because I don't really want to carry them.
Yeah, but I, I think also, Kathy, I, I think it might be helpful if we did a sidewalk um, just to take a look at that and where, where on the property we want to put a sign. And um, and that, with this is the language that we're talking about specifically. And that, yeah, that's fine. Um, but I think, I, I think just knowing where I, I don't, I don't, I don't think we've all ever been up at the site, site together to take a look at it and to uh address where the, where we would want to, to post the sign, where we'd want to have a trail come out, that kind of thing. And that would, and I have no problem with saying, let's get the materials in there, but as far as actually, um, you know um, committing ourselves at this point, um, I think at least we don't have to worry about that for a month or two at least. Um, and um, and it would be helpful for us all to take a look and see what we think is the best access point for the property before, before actually putting posts in the ground. But we can buy the materials, no problem with that. Use that, use up some money in our, in this, but, in the budget, yes.
Yeah, well, actually, you know, we do probably have two posts here too that we had left over that from, from what we had. So, I mean, we could literally get stuff up there this point, which would be nice.
Hmm, it would be nice.
But um, yeah, we can certainly think about this. I can send this around to everybody as well, so you can look it over. Um, but I think in general, the sign doesn't have to be quite as large.
Can we make a motion to accept the signage and?
Yeah, I'm, I'm I'm happy to um somebody will make a motion to that, to the effect of the word, I think the things are important if we, is that we agree on the, the, the wording on the sign. And that it's going to be white on green, and it's gonna be put on this mini kiosk of some kind, or just on a signpost at the site, at, at a side of, a, a site to be, place to be determined. But I really would like to have us, as a group take a look, do a sidewalk and look at the property and see where, what we think is the most, the best access point to aim for as we think about putting in a trail to connect um, existing trails, probably come off the Ruby Trail, you think, Kathy?
Yeah, I think that
Yeah, with, probably come off the Ruby Trail uh and, and to access the property. What, where do we want to have the point of entry be for people as they, as they go into, onto that property? And what features we want to highlight should be part of, part of the discussion.
So here's what I have for the motion. And I'm not sure who's made it. A motion to accept the wording on the signage, white on green, and it will be placed on the site.
In a place to be determined.
Is that, are you making that motion, Laura?
No, no, this is what you've all been saying, but I, it was, it was and I'm not sure who's making the motion.
Needs to be somebody other than me. I'm tired of making mo, all the motions.
Do it, Nora.
I make a motion to accept the sign as presented at this meeting. The green with the white lettering um to be ordered and to be placed at a site to be determined at the Peddix Sanctuary.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
That's Jackie. Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so moved. Right, thank you, guys. Um, let's see, moving on from the signs. Um, and we can certainly talk about setting up a um, it would have to be a noticed meeting if we're all gonna be, you know, going up there. We have to notice the meeting. So we can talk about when we want to do that. And, you know, after they're done up at the property, Public Works, you know, it'd be a good time to go in and see, you know, what it looks like. That'd be a good thing.
As I say, once they remove the camp, right?
Yeah, they're, they're taking the camp off the property and they're filling the hole in. They're gonna be removing some of the, there's also a, a small shed that we found the last time we were up there. It's off in the pucker bush. It was hard to find. So they're gonna be clearing some of the invasive um plants that are around there. They're bringing up the brush hog. While they've got the ability to come in with the trucks and everything. And they're gonna be using that to clear out a little bit around the house, as well as down to the pond and then around on the dams. So, you know, we'll have a, a better idea of what it's gonna look like. Um, the other thing is, um, Chris offered to make a bench um to put out on the property if we want to have a bench by the pond. Um, he has material right now that he could use, you know, that we have material, that was things that we've had left over to make a pressure-treated bu, uh, bench to put out there, so.
That'd be lovely.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's interesting. If you look at the property card, that they say nothing about a, a cap, the, a structure is as significant as the cabin that's there. Now, according to the, the assessors' rec, records, there's, there were three uh frame sheds, one hundred and forty-three square feet, one hundred and ninety-two square feet, and one hundred and twenty square feet, with none of which seems to me to describe what the, the str, the main structure that's being removed. So uh, I don't know, Kathy, whether there, how many sheds, how, how many sheds there actually are hiding in the woods.
It's pretty dense. It's pretty dense, because you know, Bob, Bob and I were up there with Public Works.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think some of, I, there's been a lot of, of growth of small pine, which, some of which we might want to remove to, to make the, the um um, the pond areas more accessible.
Um, Troy did say that they would be able to um, in the future, go up there with the brush hog. They could drive it up on Burma Road if they needed to. So they could continue to do some maintenance from that direction. Okay. All right, um, the other thing I wanted to talk about was, and I sent this all to you was the agreement we made with the landowners on Lustig Road. Uh, when we had a meeting with the first selectman, our attorney, Mike Demato, Troy and I uh sat down with the two landowners. And their big concern is people trying to come down Lustig Road to access the property now that the town owns it. So they have put up some private fencing across the road to try to keep people out, and they said that they feel that that's been helping. But they would like to ask us to also do something on our part, um, on our boundary But they would like to ask us to also do something on our part um, on our boundary. That basically kind of puts up some signage that um. Helps people to understand they shouldn't be trying to go on to the private property from the town's property. So I told them we would talk about some signage that we could possibly put up. And what I was thinking is possibly buying four of these private property signs. And we could put them up close to the road. Where the where Burma Road ends and Lustig Road begins, because that's where the town boundary is. And that's where the town's property is. Um, we could put a few of these signs along the edge of our boundary. So that it would try, we would try to minimize people crossing over onto Lustig Road.
Now, I I I make a motion to to uh, purchase uh, those signs. I don't know how many, how many you think would be needed. The other thing I want, I've.
How big are they Kathy?
Uh, they're twelve by twelve, so twelve inches by twelve inches. They're fairly big. Go ahead, Carol, you.
Yeah, how many do you think we we would we need more than one on each side of the road, do you think, or?
I'd like to suggest we put them even a little further out along the boundaries. Um, yes, I I'd like to suggest four of them as well. From being out there quite often.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only thing I wondered is was whether we ought to have something that that really clearly defines the the boundary between. The the town's property and the private properties. Um, and there's there's an existing gate that was there. I don't know if it would be possible to put something of of. Do you think they would like to see something like that that very clearly just defines where the where um, the public property ends and their private property begins? And whether we might be able to incorporate some of the existing parts of the sign, the gate that's there presently.
Yeah, that was something actually that um, I think. Um, Bob and I and Troy were talking about is whether or not Public Works could move that gate. And put it in the road, basically. So that when people were looking down Burma Road, they could see this gate at the very end before it turns into Lustig.
Yeah, that's I think that would be be really help a lot, because then it would be very clear. Where where the private property ends and the public property begins. And and if we could could somehow incorporate some of the existing uh, gate. That would might cut down on costs. Or, you know, we will have some some money uh, left. And and one of the things to remember is that the vote that was taken. To prove the funding for the property was for for associated costs. It listed several things like legal fees and whatever, but associated costs. Uh, with the remediation, um, we can't take some of the money from remaining funds. From the. Authorized for the purchase.
That Robert created that he doesn't remember.
Um, that, you know, certainly we can do, and it may be while Public Works is in there, they can try to take that. I don't know if the posts, once they remove the post, how what condition they'll be in in the bottom, if they'll be deteriorated or not, but. They certainly, you know, can try to do that. There's no reason to have the gate where it is. It it's a gate to nowhere.
Especially with all the trees that have grown up there. It wouldn't get you, it would be difficult, pretty difficult to get through there.
Definitely. Um, so do we want to vote on the signage? Somebody, I think Carol, you started to make a motion on.
Yeah, I'll make them. Uh, uh, somebody else want to do that? Fine.
The motion that as far as you got was a motion to purchase signs, and then we stopped to talk and came up with four signs.
Okay, yeah, just a motion to make. I'll make a motion to to uh, purchase for private property. Please respect our privacy signs. Uh, to be posted along such the abandoned section of Lustig Road. Um, to discourage uh, people from uh, offending the neighbors.
I'll second it.
Yeah, just purchase four signs.
Okay.
Did that effect?
Okay. Um, do I hear any more discussion? That was Nora that seconded it.
Thank you. Sorry.
And we could. You know, what's what would the cost of these?
It was fifteen ninety-nine, fifteen dollars and nine nine cents for the aluminum ones.
Okay, so we wanted to, we can, why don't we take that out of our budget?
Okay, so it's sixty-three ninety-six would be the total if we.
Whatever. But just, I don't think we need to worry about the cost.
Okay.
Exact cost figures, but.
Okay, but just for you to in terms of.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
So it'd be sixty-ish.
Sixty-three ninety-six without without tax, so.
Yeah, so you could just give me the information so I can uh, I can, we can place an order.
Okay, so I'll send it to you, Carol, and then you'll work with Rashin?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, because this was from Amazon, so.
Yeah.
All right, excellent, excellent. Thank you, guys. All right, um. Let's see, spring workday um, was something I was wondering if we should think about for Fenton Ruby Park. And the things that we could do, we do need to. Kind of replace um, a bridge on Taylor Pond Trail. The um, there's a boardwalk bridge that's close to the exit. If you go around the loop clockwise, uh, that should really be replaced. And I was thinking of. Maybe we could do something on May third or May fourth. That's a Saturday or a Sunday. Um, we could see if we could get people from Friends of the Park to come out. Um, I could even check with the Boy Scouts and see if they're available, but. I know you probably don't all have your calendars handy, but does anybody have any thoughts on that? May third or May fourth. The next weekend is uh, Mother's Day. And then we're getting close to Memorial Day and all that.
I know I am at a wedding, so I I'm not available that weekend.
Okay.
I can't make the third. I could make the fourth.
Okay, so the fourth is a possibility for Laura. Okay, I'm available both weekends.
Um, Kathy, would we be?
Wait, wait.
Yeah, the fourth would work for me.
Okay, what was that, Carol?
Um, we 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 be, this might be a good opportunity, an appropriate use of the of some of the ARPA money. You get the materials for these bridges.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, because we really need to use that with this, use it or lose it.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we need a lot of wood for this rebuild, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then if there are a few members, you could check out the location. For the Pedics Property for the signage.
Um, we could, we could do after the the workday, sure.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, it's a good idea. We could maybe try to do it all on that Sunday, work for two hours and then.
I was thinking we should invite the Girl Scouts as well as the Boy Scouts. The sort of stuff I I would have loved to have done.
That's how I got myself into this so deep when they were having, when they first acquired Fenton Ruby Park. Um, they they uh, they had a committee to to look into what, how the whole thing should be managed. And they had a representative for the Boy Scouts and and I said, I marched into the Selectmen's Office, the First Selectmen's Office and said. There's going to be a representative for for the Girl Scouts too, and you're looking at her.
So we certainly could invite them. Um, they're going to be working on the Pollinator Garden too, to clean it up. Uh, maybe that'll be an opportunity for them to come out that day and, you know, be more visible to the public, so. Okay, so Sunday, May fourth seems to be a possibility for some people. That's good. I can put that out to Fenton Ruby Park, um. Friends and see what happens. So if you want to put that on your calendar. Uh, what do you want to do for start time? Do you want to nine, nine thirty, ten o'clock? What's your pleasure?
I don't know, nine thirty?
Nine thirty, okay. And maybe go till noon? And then we can walk up to um.
Pedic property.
The Pedic Sanctuary.
Yeah, in in that case, Kathy, we we need, we would need to warn that as a meeting.
Yeah.
Or warn it as a twelve o'clock meeting.
Yeah, maybe we can start off at twelve thirty.
Or something, whatever, whatever time, but.
Yeah, okay.
Because I I might not, I can't really be much help on a workday, but I I could be um, I could. Could be there for for looking at the Pedics Property.
Okay, great.
And we but we have to, you'd have to warn where are we going to start, what about the start point, where where we would assemble.
Sure, yeah, I I will I will notice it. No worries on that.
No, okay.
Okay, great. All right, any other discussion on that? Um, again, there's, you know, trail cleanup. We'll get the trail stewards perhaps to come out as well. And uh, work on their trails, so there might be some um. Repainting to do, blazing, so on. Okay, uh, moving on to Knowlton Preserve. I have not had any reports of any problems. Um. Collaborative organizational news and communication. As as you all know, Laura and I went to the CLCC Conference on March twenty-second.
Come on.
And uh, I thought it was a really uh, interesting conference, lots of options. I I happened to go to a couple of different sessions. One was on uh, diversity, inclusion and um. Equity um, in terms of getting people out on in onto your open spaces. And also on forestry, uh, pollinators and wildlife habitat. Laura, you went to different sessions that I went to.
One second, yep, and I.
You you don't have to take yourself down verbatim. Don't worry about it, yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, I went to um, and and we went to different ones, but some of the some similar topics. So I went to advancing diversity, equity, inclusion through land conservation. Um, I, the second session, building a regional open space inventory. Um, creating wildlife habitat in an area overtaken by invasive plants, which was really just a lot about. All the invasive plants that are in the area. And then the last one, uh, CT Trail Finder, which is a a trail mapping tool. Um, and that Yukon has, and so it was all about how um, you could create these um. Inner uh, um. Kind of story maps, um, maps of our trails with the um. Digital maps of the trails, um, that was pretty cool. And it's been it's been so long now, I'm looking at going, I don't remember. I mean, I have these notes and I'm like, trying to remember the specifics, but. Yeah, it was it was a, it was a really, it was a beautiful day and wonderful company. And a very interesting conference.
That was.
Thank you guys for going and bringing back all this knowledge.
It was uh, it was well attended for sure. Um. Willington Public Library Collaboration. Uh, as you know, we're doing the uh, dos and don'ts of native plant gardening on Saturday at eleven. Uh, Jen Sterling Folkher is going to be our speaker. And Jen's going to bring some seed packets, as Carol mentioned. Um, and we'll reimburse her for those once we know how many she's distributed. And um, the Girl Scouts will also be there with a table uh, setting up their display about the Pollinator Gardens that they've worked on. We also talked last time about the summer reading program with Steve Oger. And he had described uh, a book reading and then maybe a scavenger hunt at Fenton Ruby Park. And as you probably remember, Heather had volunteered because she has some. Materials that she prepared for deep in the past uh, to do a scavenger hunt at Fenton Ruby Park, who knew, right? And uh, she's willing to help and Nora, am I right? You really, you thought you would be able to help out too? Okay, so maybe you and Heather could get in touch with Steve and um, start to discuss some dates for that. And then we can, whatever we can do to support you from the commission side, let us know. Okay, awesome. Um, and I will be sending out, by the way, a list, another another membership list for the Conservation Commission that will include Heather's contact information. Okay, so I'm working on that update and I'll send it out to you all. Parks and Rec, I spoke to Rachel Signore, the new director. And she was asking me if anybody on the commission would be interested in helping them. To lead like a regular hike um, on some of the town's trails. Uh, she's had some requests from some seniors who are interested in having kind of a regular walking group or a hiking group. Low-impact hiking. So if anybody's interested in working with Rachel, that's something that she's. She's looking for someone to kind of spearhead. Um, Eastern.
Kathy, would that be in in conjunction with the Senior Center in any way or or?
Possibly, I think she said when she went to the Senior Center, it was something that some of the seniors mentioned to her, they were interested in. So. You know, I don't know the, I, you know, I shouldn't say this, but I don't know what the ability level would be of some of the seniors, like, could they go on rougher trail?
Tell you about one senior or two seniors have somewhat limited abilities.
You know, there's people of all abilities, all ages, so it doesn't have to be limited to, you know, a certain age group either. If somebody from the Conservation Commission wanted to do a monthly hike. You know, just lead a monthly hike, a very, you know, low-impact, gentle hike. Um, you know, and then offer that Rachel would, I'm sure would partner in terms of getting the word out. Um, let's see, Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, I attended the Natchog Healthy Watershed Plan. Meeting on April eighth. And what they're looking to do is to, within the eight towns that are part of the uh, Natchog Watershed. They're trying to develop an advisory group that would meet monthly for the next fifteen months at least. And work on uh, two projects. And they're looking for people who might want to be involved in subgroups, including things like, for example, agriculture within the watershed, forest. Um, pro forest forestry, open space issues, um. Trying to think of some of the other subgroups that they had talked about, maybe the advisory group, the. Would try to develop and then come up with two projects to kind of implement within the watershed. For example, like a rain garden might be one project. Or um, a a big educational uh, program on septic systems. You know, anything that could impact the watershed. So we're going to be meeting again sometime in May. If any of you are interested. In coming to those meetings, they're also uh, available via Zoom, so as I get more information about the next meeting, I can put that out. For anybody who's interested. Uh, support for farmland preservation. Oh, wait a minute, sorry. I skipped Wellington Day, yeah, that's May twenty-fourth, eleven to three. We had mentioned at our last meeting and I, you know. I had asked if anybody was interested in having a table and representing the Conservation Commission. I don't know if anybody's thought about it more. I think um, we're getting close to the time where people have to um. Apply. To get a table, and they also have a brochure they're putting out, so you can have something put in the brochure, even if you don't have a table. I think there's a bit of a cost to that. I don't know if it's something we potentially want to just put something in from the Conservation Commission. Um, it's going to go out and um, a handout that's going to be available throughout the. The event itself and I guess around town, so. If anybody's interested in working on that. You know. Support for farmland preservation. So pretty close to when we had our last meeting, Jackie had sent out three proposed ordinances. So she, we've been talking about the background uh, to why we want to support farmland. And farmers, um, and Jackie had provided us with a lot of the um. Connecticut State statute and what is um, available for towns to. Do locally in terms of property tack exemptions for buildings as well as farm machinery. Um, and then she went back to the drawing board after we had our last meeting and she sent us, sent us the three proposed ordinances. So let me bring those up. See here. Sorry, I'm still trying to figure out how to navigate all this stuff. That I have to put on the uh. Computer to have ready for everybody. Let's see. We go. Okay, so this was the first one. Um, let me. Uh, see, I might have to go back here and start. uh see, I might have to go back here and start sharing again, hang in there, sorry. All right, I gotta share before I go into that screen, sorry guys, here it is, can you see it?
It's a little small.
Okay, let me make it bigger.
That's better.
More better? Okay, especially if you have a small screen, right? So you all should have gotten a copy of this, I don't know if you had a chance to print it out, look it over. Um have any comments about it? This is the Right to Farm ordinance. The only suggestion I had Jackie on this one is where it says, on the very first line, agriculture plays a significant role in Wellington heritage, I think it should be Wellington's apostrophe S.
Okay, got it.
Anybody else have any other suggestions on that one? I think Ja- Jackie did a great job of putting this together, thank you. Uh, let's see, let me go to the next one. Okay, so this one's the ordinance that is an additional property tax exemption for farm machinery. So again, what Jackie did is she took the model ordi- ordinances and she basically turned them into some samples we can provide to the town when we're suggesting these changes or these um adoptions of the ordinances. On this one, Jackie, um one of the suggestions I might have is on section three. Can you guys see my cursor when I put it on the screen?
It's it's really small again, it went small when you switched.
Oh, thank you, okay.
I can see the cursor.
Great, okay, so that'll help help me pinpoint what I'm talking about. So under section three, finding and purpose. Um, it says, the people of the town of Wellington. And in some of the other model ordinances I looked at, like Ashford. It used the words, instead of the people, it said the selectmen and town meeting of the town of Wellington. Instead of just saying the people. So it indicates there was a town meeting, basically, and that's.
Yeah, I think that the template said the legislative body. And I guess I wasn't quite sure what to put in there.
Yeah, I looked at Ashford's, the one they adopted. And it and there said, the selectmen and town meeting of the town of Wellington, I don't know how people feel about that language, but.
Well, by voting to uh adopt the ordinance, that's what that's what they would be.
It has to go to a town meeting.
Would have to go to a town meeting to be ad- uh for an ordinance, for the ordinance to be adopted, so. And the selectman would have to call the meeting, so um you could use that language, but.
So if we put instead of the people, if we put the selectmen and town meeting of the town of Wellington. Would that be something people are okay with if if we change that? Again, that's what the wording was in the actual ordinance for the town of Ashford. Cause they basically have the same template.
Yeah.
Are you trying to leave people in there somehow, so we're not just saying and?
No, you can, you can go with selectmen.
And town meeting?
I would put at town meeting.
What's that, Bob?
I would put at at town meeting.
Yeah, or maybe just a the town meeting, uh the the people of the town of Wellington assembled in town meeting, find that. Or something like that.
So something about the town meeting being in here, because it indicates that the people attended and voted on this at town meeting, okay? So what? What would we propose? What, does somebody wanna finalize the wording?
Well, how about the people, the residents of Wellington, at a at a town, at the town meeting? Find that. The preservation of farming and farmland.
Okay.
But did you get? Is the residents assembled, yeah, a town, a town meeting, yeah.
The residents assembled at town meeting, at a Wellington town meeting?
The resident, the residents of the town of Wellington at town, at a town meeting. Find that the preservation of farming.
Jackie, did you get that?
Um, one sec, uh so the residents of the town of Wellington at a town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got it too.
Okay, thank you. And then down here um on the second line, important to retaining Wellington's, I think that should be apostrophe S. Ru- rural character?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, which, oh, that's in section three also?
Yeah, second sent or second line.
So ju- 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 just a a point of uh reference. Uh, does the state of Connecticut still allow for mention of rural character? It's come up at uh PZC and rural character doesn't fit the the bill in most cases any longer?
Well, it's quite a few fewer in Mansfield a few weeks back.
Yeah, um so, I don't know, I'd have to look and see what the uh the state ordinance is or uh Mike D'Amato would have a good sense of what that wo- what what re- rural has been uh replaced by.
Can you just say open space, isn't?
Yeah, you can.
Farmland open space?
Yeah.
Important to retaining Wellington's open space and quality of life.
Well, how about open space character, you know?
Okay.
I don't know, that's, I'm just throwing it out there.
I would get rid of character.
I would agree, I would just go with open space personally.
Yeah.
The rural character and quality of life are are some raised red flags to some people.
Yeah, quality of life certainly, you know, fits the bill. The state hasn't come down on that yet.
Well, it could be retaining Wellington's um open space and protecting its natural resources, as well as promoting economic and environmental susta- sustainability. Um, I mean, if if quality of life is hard to measure. Um, you know, we're talking maybe about protecting natural resources, like the soils, the farming soils.
Yeah, well, how about retaining Wellington's natural resources?
Yeah.
So that that way, that that way you get out all of the character and quality of life stuff, which can be can be interpreted different ways, but if you're retaining Wellington's natural resources.
And open space.
And open space, I would leave that part of it in too.
Okay, so we're removing rural character and quality of life and replacing it with open space and natural resources.
Yeah.
Maybe I would, yeah. I would tend to re- revert, reverse them, put the natural resources first. In either way, it's fine.
I I hear what you're saying, I think it does flow better with natural resources versus. Uh, I don't think it.
That's fine.
Okay, then on section four. So, interestingly enough, the Connecticut General Statutes, um the section that this is referring to is twelve dash ninety-one um A. But also in these, in the the paragraph here. We're using little A as well, because we have an A, we have a B down here.
Oh, my God.
And so I would like to suggest we leave, you know, what's here for the statute, little A, because that's the way it's spelled out in the statute. But we have the option of, instead of using a little A here, a a small A, is capitalize A here. Capitalize B here, where it says little B on line four or five.
Subsection, the subsection B.
Yep, subsection B, yep. I don't know that you have to capture all this yourself, you know, in your notes.
I, the the editing type stuff I wasn't trying to, but the changes in wording I did right.
Okay, because I think as long as Jackie is able to take notes and revise it, yeah. Um, and then B here as well. So, and then here again, Jackie, if you read through it, you'll pick up what I'm saying, right? You know what I'm saying, is anything that refers to the sections um A or B that we're delineating should be capitalized in the text. And just leave the small A where it's describing the statute.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Those are, tho- and then my other suggestion for here is section four should have um, A should start on one line and then B should be its own paragraph. The big B. And if there was a C, I think in the next um ordinance, there's a C. They did that in Ashford and I just think it's clearer when you read through it, that there's three parts to section four or two parts to section four.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Now, let's see, the next one. Building exemption, okay. So farm buildings, oh wait a minute, that's what we did, isn't it? We did the, did we just do machinery?
No.
Yeah, I think that was machinery. Farm machinery, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so here's buildings. And the same thing here, we can change the people on section three.
Okay.
Okay, we'll do that.
And then real quick, character and quality of life thing.
Yeah.
The same changes in those introductory sentence.
Yep. And then down here under section four, it's the same thing, it's just substituting a capital A for the different parts of section four, so A, B, C. And making them separate paragraphs.
Okay.
Um, I wanted to ask people, there's a few areas where we have the dollar amount is just spelled, it's not, it doesn't look like it's a numeral. Do we want to suggest that we have the numeral in parentheses afterwards? For example, on this line here, at least fifteen thousand dollars in gross sales, do we want to put a parentheses with fifteen thousand dollars in numerals as well to make it stand out more?
I think that would be good.
Yeah, and this, that that might apply to, but that might apply also to the to the machinery.
Yep.
As well.
It it does, and and we have five hundred thousand dollars on this line, for example, right here. Okay, I think if it was also put in parentheses with the dollars showing, I think it just is a little bit easier to absorb. And the same thing on, you're right, going back to the other ordinance on um let me go back to that one.
Yeah, the same, the same things would apply.
Yeah, in buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. I think we're talking about the additional, see here, it's actually spelled out. The two hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, that should be a period, shouldn't it, right there? Instead of a comma?
Yeah, it should be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, this is going back to machinery, Jackie, where it says two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
I think that should be a period. Unless it's written that way in the statute for some reason, because otherwise it looks like two hundred and fifty.
Why do you, why do you need the cents for the two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, just take it out, yeah.
You really don't need that.
Which two hundred and fifty thousand, where are you?
Right, in this line.
So you think the term fifty thousand, get rid of the comma?
See at the very end here, where it should be a period to be zero zero at the end. Like for cents, it's got a.
Oh, gotcha, it within the number.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just do away with the cents.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I thought you meant the one after the parentheses, I was like, no, I think it needs that comma.
Right here, this one? Yeah, okay.
So are we gonna put the cents in or not, cause there, I think any place there's dollars, like the fifteen thousand dollars in expenses, blah, 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 the requirement, so wherever do we want to put that, that uh the dollars in 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 numerals? An- anytime there's a mention of a specific amount of money?
Yeah.
I think that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, ki- if if Jackie, if you just go back through the text at anywhere where it mentions dollars, just make sure they're also put in numerals in parentheses afterward.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other suggestions on these?
No. Any thanks to Jackie for working so hard on this.
No problem.
Yep. And then, once we have that all completed, Jackie, um you know, you and I, if you want, we can work together on that cover letter to present it, to bring it forward to the Board of Selectmen. We already voted last time on all the amounts, which you've incorporated into the ordinances, so um, is everybody comfortable with us moving this forward? Do we need to take a vote on this, besides having voted on, you know, recommending the three separate ordinances, which we did last year, last meeting?
Oh, uh I I just think you need a nod from us to proceed.
Okay. Can I see a nod?
Do I, do I have to write down like the 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 nod vote? The nod was unanimous?
There we go. That would be unique.
We did, we did already um motion, we've we've made, we made motions at our last meeting recommending that we adopt an ordinance to increase farm machinery tax exemption, to increase the the um uh assessed on the building stuff and to adopt a right to fo- to farm ordinance. So.
Yeah.
So I I think we've covered ourselves at our last meeting by what we voted then.
Yep. I did want to mention one thing, um I I had uh been talking to the tax assessor. And she mentioned something which I found interesting, um if you look at the definition of farming in Connecticut. It also includes the the whole concept of packaging and you know, how you take care of, for example, produce um after you've grown it and harvested it. So technically, she said if somebody wanted to build a large building in town just to process food, even though they had not grown the food on the property. Technically, that would be considered agriculture and they could use these exemptions for uh farm machinery as well as buildings. Um, so I just want us to understand what this means. It doesn't just mean open fields with agriculture in them. It could potentially be buildings that you know, um do something with the agriculture product after it's been harvested.
Um, Kathy, cause it refers to uh a a subsection of the statutes, twelve dash ninety-one A. Um, so it might be useful to look at, refer to that section.
It's, there's um, actually, I think it's um one, I I'm not sure if I still have this loaded on my computer that I can show you. I can send it around to everybody, cuz I do have it on my other computer. I use a different computer for Zoom because I have a camera on this one. But I'm not sure I have the other farming ordinance on here that I can show you, so. But, um, I mean, the farming description, I will send it around, I just want people to recognize that. You know, these ordinances, what we, once we put them in place. Can be utilized by different levels of agricultural production. Um, I mean, food is important, you know. But it potentially could be a large warehouse, sitting on an open space property. And everything's happening inside the building. If that makes any sense.
Yeah, yeah, uh, the, these, these ordinance, though, are. Like, couldn't they still do that, even if we don't pass this ordinance, because it's a Connecticut general statute?
They can, they just wouldn't, if, if we didn't have tax exemptions, they certainly could. You know, if zoning was such that they could put a building, a large building and do production, or, um. Do something with the product afterward, it's just the tax exemption is what I'm talking about, so. If big ag wanted to come in and just put up a building. Um, and they're not producing anything, they're just having things delivered, and they're packaging tomatoes, for example. To ship out all over, you know, northeast, uh, region. They could do that under this and get a tax exemption for their building.
But I guess, I, I guess my question was, isn't that tax exemption in the Connecticut general statutes? Already, and we're just making a town ordinance so that we're saying we're farm friendly?
Yeah, no, it, every town has the option of adopting these ordinances to allow the tax exemption. The only thing that is. Uh, by statute right now, is the farm machinery. Up to a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. The other ordinances that we're proposing, we're, we're proposing to add on another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that. They can qualify for an assess, an assessed value. Of, um, you know, an additional assessed value of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that means. Uh, what's in place by statute is the first hundred thousand dollars of assessed value for farm machinery is tax exempt. If. The farmer has at least fifteen thousand dollars in sales or expenses. And they have to apply for this every year with the tax assessor, so they have to, you know. It's not everybody that necessarily qualifies, they have to qualify because they have sales or expenses. That's the only requirement that's standard, like, no town can, um, oppose that. We're adding additional exemptions is what we're suggesting.
Yeah, basically, I think the difference is that we're, we're recommending the maximum allowable exemption. As opposed to the minimum allowed exemption that's in the statute. And that's the case of with both the, the machinery and the.
Buildings.
And the buildings.
The building, there's no minimum.
Okay.
No, that's, that's up to the towns, if they wanna adopt it, they can do it at any level, but there's no requirement for them to do it. It's just the farm machinery.
Yeah.
The hundred thousand is the minimum, and the, and every town has to allow for that.
And what's, uh, what's, what are the exemption amounts for the, uh, property?
Um, it's for the buildings.
Yeah, buildings.
Um, it's up to five hundred thousand dollars in assessed value. So a building could have an appraised value of, say, somewhere around seven hundred thousand dollars. Because the assessed value is seventy percent of that. So that would get them at, you know, almost five hundred thousand dollars would be, that means that the town cannot tax them. On up to fif- five hundred thousand dollars worth of their appraised value on the building. It, I mean, it's potentially loss of tax revenue for the town. So, there's a balance here, you know, we're trying to support farmland and farmers. But, I, I don't know if any of you have been going to the town budget meetings. But there's a lot of, there are a lot of hot budget, um, issues right now because of the reevaluation, so. People's residential properties in general went up by about forty-seven percent in terms of the value. Um, and there's gonna be kind of a shift of more of a burden on residential properties for tax, for paying taxes versus. Industry and commerce, or commercial buildings, or properties, excuse me. Because their values did not go up as much as residential properties with this new revow.
Is there, isn't there something also about motor vehicle, a cap on motor vehicle?
Yes, they changed.
Too, so that's.
Yeah, they changed how they're assessing motor vehicles, so in most cases. Um, people will actually see a reduction in their taxes on their motor vehicle tax. But for your residential properties, um, people are gonna be seeing some pretty big tax bills. Compared to what it was last year. Because the grant list did go up, but expenses in town also went up. So, I'm just, you know, I'm just throwing that out there, because when we present this to the town. There will be people there, believe me, because they're at every Board of Selectmen meeting, there are every budget hearing, Board of Finance meeting. Saying that taxes are too high. And anything that reduces revenue to the town will increase taxes. On overall for residents, so. You know, to sell this, we're going to have to really. Show that trying to support farmers and farmland is where this town wants to be.
I think also there's not a lot of properties that, you know, I, it seems like no, none of the current farmers. Are going to, um, utilize the additional. Uh, machinery exemption at this time, so that would be, you know, no change, and then the buildings. It's likely to only be maybe six or so, um. Properties that would utilize the tax exemption. So it's relatively few people now, but the idea behind the ordinance is that. If we do this, then we can attract more farms, farm businesses into town.
Yep.
Um, you know, and. That we might not otherwise attract, so we don't, wouldn't be able to take their, their tax money anyways.
Yeah, that's a good point, Jackie.
Well, and, and if people are looking at, at what's happening in the economy generally, and price of food and what. What the effects of certain government actions are going to be on the, on food, uh, there. Should begin to realize how much, how important it is to have local farms and local food sources. You can't always, we cannot count on that. Certainly, uh, domestic production, um, generally in agriculture is gonna be affected a lot by a lot of factors. That are currently being put in place. At the federal level.
So coming up with more of these, this rationale is really important, and so that's why I'm throwing it out. I'm playing the devil's advocate, because I've seen how people in town are reacting to a lot of the. The issues with the taxes and the revow. So. You know, we're, but if we're prepared, when we go to town meeting for this. You know, it's just, we're gonna be able to help push this through better, if we're better prepared with the hard questions that we know might come. So. So keep that in mind, you know, as we move forward, like some of, you know, the statements that we wanna make, um, when we're pitching this.
Well, and, and I think one of the major things, when you go to a town meeting to pitch this. Is to make everyone aware upfront, what the dollar amounts it are. That the state already has for exemptions. So that people don't think that we're going from, you know.
Zero to.
Zero to, you know, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
With the, with the buildings, we are, because there is no requirement. I mean, it's the state statutes allowing towns to provide this exemption up to five hundred thousand, but it doesn't require it. It only requires the hundred thousand on the farm machinery.
Yeah, well, I, I think one of the things that we, we might keep our eyes on is, uh. See how the budget referendum goes. And see if it passes the first time or not.
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know, if we need, if we really want this to be able to go through as an ordinance. Maybe we should, uh, come back and. Decide if we wanna go all the way maxed out, or if we wanna pull it back a little bit.
Well, we've kind of voted already that we will move it forward at the max.
Well, yeah, I know, but, you know, when, i- it, it's never, uh, a bad time before you present to rethink it. What the townspeople have to say about what they wanna pay in taxes.
Yeah, we can always make a motion to, to modify our previous action before we take it forward.
Right, right.
And, and if you bring it to town meeting, I mean, people might have, you know, they may say, let's modify it too, I mean, that's a possibility.
Right.
But, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you again, Jackie, for all your work on this.
Yeah, thank you, Jackie.
You're welcome.
Yeah. All right, sorry, this is a lot of things to get through tonight, I apologize for so much, um, stuff. Well, let's see. And get out of this. And. Okay, so I had sent you, and I don't have it, um, the ability to bring it up right now. The letter that I, the draft letter for the EDC, so we're on to town development now. And I sent you a draft letter that I wrote to the Economic Development, uh, Commission. That was based on a lot of our comments that we made about the section in the draft. Uh, relating to tourism, ecotourism, and agriculture. I don't know if you've had a chance to look through that proposed letter and have any comments on it. The, the next meeting for the, uh, EDC is gonna be the last Monday in April.
Comments that I have, Kathy, obviously, that, uh, when the draft was put together. Uh, the consultant didn't, uh, have the resources to understand. Like, like the wa- bodies of water, which ones were private, which ones were open to the public. So, uh, that's certainly something that needs to be addressed and made right in the, uh, uh, final. Uh, document, so, yeah, I, I, you know, you're, you're, I, I think you're headed in the right direction, uh, with, with that. And some of your other comments as well.
Yeah, we did, we, um, do say, um, under the section of ecotourism and outdoor recreation, where they're talking about things like. Well, Willimantic River, Fenton River, Halls Pond, Gaines Lake, Drobny Lake, which are both ponds, actually, and I mentioned that in the. Letter, Taylor Pond, Bisnet, and I, you know, did mention that a lot of these are private, uh, property.
Yeah, Kathy did, um, they meant, one of the things that was in originally, they talked a lot about Nipbuck for, of the, um. One of the state forests, they, they talked about Ny Holman, but they didn't mention Nipbuck, which is actually nine hundred and ninety-five acres.
Yep.
Um, and I don't know, I don't, not sure what recreational opportunities, I think there are some things that are allowed. Some activities that are allowed on that property, but it's certainly a significant open space. Uh, but whether it's, it fits in the category of ecotourism, I, I really don't know. But there are some properties along the, the Willimantic River that are specifically, um, that were acquired specifically for fishing access. And some of those smaller properties that are, that are state-owned open space. Right along the river.
Yeah, roaring, too, you know, um, people can fish from there and they didn't.
Right.
Wasn't on there.
Yeah, some of those, um.
And I did, you know, in my comments from, from the commission, I did say. Uh, Gaines and Drobny Lakes should be retitled as ponds, Roaring Brook should be added to the water feature list. The Nimc State Forest, Yukon Moss Forest, and Fenton Ruby Park should be added to the list of areas above. That offer natural attractions. Just to make sure it's complete.
Cuz that's a much, much larger contiguous area, um, whereas the, the Nipbuck is divided up, and, I mean, the. The, you know, there's fragmented sections.
Right, yep, the Ny Holman's.
Ny Holman has, is, yeah.
Yeah.
Broken up into several places.
Um, any other comments, any typos that you saw that I should change? I will probably be the only one submitting comments to them, but.
Hey, at least we're paying attention.
Yeah, yeah. Jackie, did you have a chance to look over the agricultural section? I don't wanna put you on the.
I, I did, um, I just didn't really have any additional comments, so.
Okay. Okay, you know, it would be very interesting to, like, you know, work. Over time to see what we can do to put together a list of people that are involved in agriculture in town and. Um, see if we can facilitate bringing them together a little bit more, um, so that they're part of the EDC. Draft, you know, that they have an opportunity to look at this and. To lend some support to the idea that agriculture should be kept in that draft. As a potential way to increase economic prosperity in town, you know, for everybody, so. Cuz I'm just afraid they could cut it, um, if they focus too much on some of the larger businesses, the business models. So. If you know of people, um, that may be interested in, you know, going to an EDC meeting and just. Verbalizing that, or when they have it more, they're gonna have like a public meeting to discuss the draft. If you could encourage people, all of us, people we know that might be involved in agriculture at whatever level it is, whether it's. Haying, or making maple syrup, or, you know, whatever, um. It would be interesting to, you know, have them speak up at these meetings, so that we don't lose that. Support in the draft.
I mean, cuz small businesses are so important to the, to our economy. Agriculture certainly falls into that, that category, it goes small and large.
Yeah, it has so many benefits, you know, overall to the town. Um, moving on to open space opportunities, I have not heard back from the landowner on Jared Sparks Road. You know, no response to my more recent email or letter. Um, so, I'll see if I can reach out again to her. Do we have any other open space opportunities that people are aware of, anything that you've heard of on the market, or, no? Wellington Wire's still on hold. Under Communications, I just wanna mention that, uh, and this is something Heather asked me to bring forward to the commission. Department of Public Works is gonna be having a community cleanup day on Sunday, April twenty-seventh, from ten to two. And, um, she was, um, you know, asking us to get the word out, so I'm gonna send a, an email blast out to the Fenton Ruby Park. Friends and just let them know it's an opportunity if they're interested.
Show up at the, at the, uh.
Yeah, at the Public Works Department. Yeah, I'm not.
Your instructions.
Yeah, there's an, there's an address there, I'm not sure if it's the office, or if it's. I don't think it's right at the transfer station, I think it's where the office is before you get to the transfer station.
Oh, okay.
We can.
If you're interested, yeah, there, there are instructions somewhere that I saw.
Yeah, I just, I just sent it out, um, and there's from Heather, I just forwarded her letter to me. And there is a flyer that's attached, if you open the flyer, there's a little more information. I sent it out to everybody today.
Posted it on Facebook, although I don't go on Facebook much, but. Have no idea if he's following me.
Open space and natural. Open space and natural resource maps, uh, no report on that right now. I still haven't heard back from the professor at Yukon. Uh, membership, uh Heather was appointed, Heather Alexson was appointed as an alternate. And her term, because she's filling a vacant term that was already in progress, uh her term will be until December first, twenty twenty-six. And she told me she got swear, she got sworn in today, so she's ready to go when she's available to come to the meeting.
So, so we we've had full complement of regular members and we're short only one alternate?
Yeah.
Yay.
Yay, that's pretty good.
That's great.
Better than some commissions, that's for sure.
Yes, indeed.
And that, and that's not even like holding in-person meetings with candy.
It would be kind, and in some ways, it would be kind of nice to get back to doing that at some point.
I know, I know. Well, maybe we can think about trying to hold an in-person meeting. I mean, Laura said to me on the way to the conference, she hasn't met some of you in person. And that was sad to me. I was like, oh.
Not to mention the candy.
Yeah.
Well, the availability and the availability of of documents and maps and things like that that might come up in the meeting where we could but go to the file cabinet and pull something out out just for people to see. That that's really a onus too, um, to be on site, um, where we have resources available where we don't. We can't, that's, uh, but you can't, yes. Yeah, we don't have to keep saying to Kathy, can you zoom in on that?
Yeah, I'm really bad with that, with the back and forth. I apologize.
No, but I'm just saying it, it's, there are advantages of in-person.
Um, and then under new business, I had sent out information that Professor Wang from Yukon's Department of Earth Sciences had sent me. Um, they're interested in using the Beaver Ponds at Fenton Ruby Park to do, they they have other locations, they're doing the same study, but they would like to use the Beaver Ponds at Fenton Ruby to install some water monitoring equipment to study water balance and quality changes in Beaver Ponds. Um, and I had sent you her series of email as well as a picture. Uh, let's see if I can bring up the picture. I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to do it. Let me see. I have to go into my my mail to pull it up, so bear with me.
Yeah, they can't find it. She sent it to us on April second.
Yeah, thank you, so sorry. Um, there we go. And now I gotta share that with you, though, once it comes up, so hang in there.
Okay.
Okay, let's see if I can get you guys back here. And open this up. And share it. Okay. So this is the picture she sent me, which is an aerial view of the pond. So here's Taylor Pond. Here's the smaller Beaver Pond near the parking lot. And she's proposing to put this, these devices um in the ponds as well as in some areas of the wetlands. Um, some of them are to monitor groundwater, for example, the orange ones, these two orange ones. And then this would be like in the little stream um as well as here. So they're looking at the areas of, you know, where the water's coming in and actually the the body of water, and then as the water's going out. And so she would like to put about eight of these monitors and they're, they're basically, she said, two and a half inch pipes, and they have a white PVC pipe over them to protect the equipment. And they would be installed sometime later in May or early June. They would be in the water from one to three years. And they can take the data remotely, so they don't have to wade into the pond to get the data. They can use Bluetooth from the shore and talk to the equipment and download the data. So this is what she's asking if the commission would give permission for them to do this study. I asked her about if we could, if she could write, if we were gonna do this, if she could write up some contract of some sort that basically states that we're not liable for the equipment if it gets damaged. Um, that they promised to remove the equipment, which I imagine they would because it's expensive, so I don't think they're gonna leave these pipes there. Um, and also that they could write something up that we could put in the kiosk that would explain the study and what people are seeing on the landscape. And she said she could do that.
Yeah, and she also said they can place them in locations that minimize visibility and inter- interaction with park visitors and wildlife.
Right.
And would she be able to share the information with the the committee or presented to the townspeople?
She definitely.
Are we gonna have access to like this, like underwater cameras and stuff to see? I mean, that, I think that's amazing. Let's do it.
I I don't think there's cameras that you're gonna be able to use, like, there's not putting cameras on there, the equipment's. Chemicals and, yeah.
Okay.
But she said, you know, once they publish their data, she definitely would share it with the commission.
Cool.
Yeah. So, so what's your, what are your feelings on this in general?
Oh. Strongly that we should support science.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and uh.
I, would we, would we need to um discuss this with the selectmen for, is that something, do you think this step we need to take, or do you think we could just approve it ourselves? We have management authority over the park.
Right.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah. I mean, I, we could let them know, but I'm not sure we need.
I I don't think we have to run and ask. I think we can.
I don't think we need to ask permission.
I don't think we need to ask permission either, I just thought. But we, it probably would be good to notify them that we have agreed to cooperate with this and and uh I think it's good info.
Yeah, I I think we should share, it, but we should share in like, what an exciting opportunity. And again, you, like you said, use it as an educational opportunity, have them, you know, develop some education materials in the kiosk and like, I I think it's, if if we could engage the students at Hall in it in some way, like, that would be really amazing, right? This scientific study going right on at Fenton Ruby, and it's gonna be very unobtrusive the way the sensors are put in there, so I, no one's really gonna know it's happening unless we actually promote it and tell them about it. And I think we should.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a, it's important for us to to, as as Laura says, to help um forward scientific ventures that could have a a positive impact on us.
Anytime we can in- interact like this, this, the results may change someone's mind about um donating space to, uh, there, some land for open space, you never can tell.
Yeah. Yeah, good point.
Yeah, I think it's a good, it's good to cooperate. All of us tree huggers need to support each other.
Well, like you said, we're supporting science, which is so important.
Yeah.
All right, so it sounds like, you know, the consensus is um we can move forward. Do you feel like we need a vote? Should we, would write it up as a vote?
Yeah, it would be a good idea to to say we we uh we agree um that we agree to um to support this. She seemed, they they seem, she seems very willing to to, uh, she's al- already anticipated some concerns that we would have, but also making sure that that uh modify things so it doesn't interfere with with park activities and and the like, so um, it seems like a a very cooperative venture, so.
I mean, like I said, we could ask her to write up a memorandum of understanding. It's not really a contract, but a memorandum about these things, like, you know, that we're not liable, that they'll remove them. Um, it also put in there that if we feel that um there's some kind of potential harm to the park or the park users at some point that we can request that they remove them early. Um, I don't anticipate that would happen, but you know, um, I mean, it 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 allows us to have that flexibility, so.
Yep.
Okay, so Carol, you started to make a motion.
No, I didn't start to make a motion. Somebody else needs to make motion. I am not the only motion maker. Okay. Who else wants to make a motion? Try, try your hand at it. It's not, it's not so scary. Laura, why don't you make the motion?
I'm 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 here trying to write the motion if somebody makes it.
Uh, I I move that we proceed with uh allowing Yukon uh uh faculty to come and uh monitor the water uh conditions in the two Beaver Ponds at Fenton Ruby Park for for an extended period of time.
So. And I'll second the motion.
Okay, so Carol's gonna second. All right. Any more discussion? And and Laura, I think maybe Bob would agree. You can kind of write that. The way you write that up is fairly flexible. What do you think?
I got it. I I got it.
You got it, good. All right. So I, as long as we have the gist of of the motion and it'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, so moved. All right, thank you. Now, our next meeting is scheduled to be on May twenty-first. Um, I will be away uh during that time celebrating Chris's birthday. So I may not really be available to host a Zoom meeting. I may have to cancel it. But I'd be willing to have to host a special meeting the week later um on the twenty-eighth. I could schedule a special meeting in case we have any important topics to uh discuss that can't wait till June.
Kathy, we could hold, couldn't, we could also hold an in-person meeting.
Well, not if I'm not here, you you can.
Well, somebody else can can can, I, it's unfortunate that we don't have a a vice chair, but um if there were something important that came up, we have held meetings with um someone else calling a meeting to order if there was something.
And there's a, they have new um security system at the town office building, so somebody would have to go through the motions of learning how to get in.
Okay.
So that's another, I'm just throwing that out. So, and and have to get a key, so, cause they're not allowing us to share our keys, so. Um, but you know, I'd be willing to try to do some kind of a, an in-person meeting maybe later in the year. Um I I don't have any problems with setting that up. But as far as May goes, I'm pretty sure I'm gonna cancel the twenty-first unless there's something really pressing um that I can either do it then, or we could have another meeting scheduled the week later, if needed.
I think we can probably get away without a May meeting.
Okay. Yeah, so it may, just makes it a little harder for us to spend any money, um, cause we'll just have that last June meeting. We'll have to.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, we did do that, we did have a special meeting just to approve expenditures one year, um, so that we could get a bunch of things uh both approved uh in time to ha- to have them paid in June, so.
We are going, I'm sorry, I'm I'm sorry. Um, we're gonna have a special meeting on May fourth after the workday.
Yep.
Ah.
But but that's.
A little too soon to have any.
Um, I mean.
I was thinking if there's anything that was really important, we could talk about it as we're hiking.
As long as we put it on the agenda, cause we can't talk about, we're not supposed to talk about.
Right, you have to have an agenda for it, right?
Yeah, but we could, that's a good point, Laura. We could hold the meeting then. Um, if we needed to discuss something with whoever does come to the May fourth meeting, as long as it's on the agenda, that's a good point.
Yeah, we've already authorized purchase of materials for repairing the bridges to come from ARPA and.
I think, didn't we already kind of talk about that, that anything that's needed at the park right now, we just in, because the.
We did.
Yeah, but I think we did discuss that earlier this evening.
Yeah.
But that's covered.
Yeah.
And that we, that those will come from, the privacy sub funds are coming out of the budget, the ARP, the uh uh, uh, bridge repair materials are coming out of ARPA, the privacy signs are coming out of the budget. Um, I don't know if there's anything else. Do you need refreshments for the workday?
Um, possibly. I mean, it's always nice to have them, you know, pick up some cider and some cookies or something unless people wanna make some cookies.
That might happen.
Oh. I mean, if one of us picks up refreshments, we can turn our um slip.
Turn their bills. That's another, another way to use up our budget money.
Yeah. Um, the other thing is the signage, did we, the the green sign for the Peddix property? Um, if we can get an estimate from Jeff on that before the end of June, we can put in for that, too.
Yep, and they, the, and I think the um, the bronze sign since it's a a requirement of the acquisition essentially by being in a a condition of the of the purchase and sales agreement could be taken from the um, the monies that were appropriated from the open space fund.
Right, and I mean, that's gonna, I'm sure it's gonna be at least a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
For that, so, and then it may cost more to have it mounted.
Yep.
Yeah.
I don't mean, how, who did the, how did we have, who did the mount? Do you know how the, how the mounting was done before?
No, but Jeff said, you know, he would help us with that.
Sure.
Yeah. And then I think Bob mentioned that um Pete Tanaka might know of someone too, right? Um.
Yeah, yeah, he knows somebody that can uh probably sandblast that stone so the plaque can fit set into the stone like the other two are.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, we'll start with Jeff first, and if he, if he doesn't know, then we'll, we'll ask Pete. How's that? So.
Yeah.
So let, let's leave it at this, so expect me to cancel the May twenty-first meeting. I have to notice the cancellation anyway. If needed, if something comes up um before May fourth, I can, you know, I'll put the agenda out for the site walk. I'm gonna call it a site walk at the Peddix Sanctuary. Um, if anything else needs to go on that agenda, I'll add it to it. Um, and then if something comes up mid-May after the fact and we need to meet, you know, I'll just send out a notice to see when people might be available for a quick Zoom meeting. How's that sound?
Sounds good.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay.
Um, question two. Should we um clarify or or put put in the minutes, I, but the discussion came up. But I think we should clarify that we, that the bronze, we expect to pay for the bronze sign it, sign for the Peddix property from the open space funds that were appropriated by the town, because the meeting, the me- meeting voted to um have meaning, anyway, that it, that that would fall under um other expenses.
Related to the property.
Related to the acquisition of the property and and it particularly because that's a stipulation in the purchase and sales agreement, which is a le- legal requirement of completing the acquisition of the property that we can take that from the open space funds appropriated by the town meeting.
Um, so when we go to vote on the sign itself, Carol, cause we'll have to vote to appropriate them or or to.
Well, whenever, okay.
Yeah, we can add that into the, to what we know the amount.
Because, yeah, because it says associated costs, including legal services and property remediation, but it's, so it's um, it's, it leaves it open for 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 associated costs, and this is an associated cost of acquiring a property.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Okay, just so we're all on the same.
Yeah, I put it, I put it in there. It's not part of the motion, but
But, yeah.
Money to come from open space.
From the open space, yeah, that's fine.
All right.
So then I think we got all our ducks in a row financially. And Kathy, you'll let me know. I don't think I'm gonna make the the thing on um, the uh library program on on Saturday, so if you could just let me know, I have her her address, so I know I can put in a um
A request.
Just let me know how much we need to reimburse Jennifer for the, for those seed packets.
Yeah, I can ask her to write it up too as a little invoice or something, Carol, we can submit to you, okay? Um. And does anybody know if you're, anybody else know if they're coming on Saturday? I'm just curious.
I'm gonna be in San Francisco.
Oh, have fun.
Visiting the boy. Visiting the boy.
Yep, um, Nora, are you coming Saturday? You said you were going somewhere, I think?
Uh, no, I'm a maybe for Saturday.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Good, Ja, how about you, Bob, do you know?
Uh, I'm not sure yet.
Okay, great.
I don't know, it depends, just found out today, our granddaughter has the flu, so they may, may not be coming this weekend. In which case, I might be able to come on Saturday afternoon, but.
Well, try to bring friends, I mean, the more, the better, so.
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be carrying bugs. And I, and if, and if she's got the flu, we just got over having COVID, so we're not, we're not up for, for any more. Diseases at this point.
Yeah, okay, and do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Uh, so moved.
Okay, Bob, thank you, second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, Nora, all right, it's now nine thirty-four. Very good, well, we'll see y'all at um, on May fourth, hopefully, or as many as you can come once I announce that, so.
Yep.
Good, have a great night, everybody.
Thanks, bye. Thank you.